Better fast than slow.
Glad to be with you, United States of America and to the Republic or to the stand. For our nation, our God, we're invisible, but we're reading your justice.
Good evening. There are flyers from the Community Development Corporation on the Jobs Bond Act that are on the railing if anybody's interested. Roll call please.
Mayor.
President.
First Ward.
Here.
Second Ward.
Here.
Third Ward.
Here.
Fourth Ward.
Here.
Fifth Ward.
Here.
Sixth Ward.
Here.
I'll present, Your Honor.
Thank you. First item is a resolution of respect for deceased F. Wade Johnson.
Whereas F. Wade Johnson passed from this life on October 13th, 1992, whereas F. Wade Johnson retired in 1981 as lieutenant after 23 years with the Fulton Fire Department, whereas he was a member of the State Street United Methodist Church, and whereas he was a veteran of World War II, having served with the U.S. Navy, whereas he is survived by his sister Mary McGinley of Phoenix, four brothers, John, Richard, Carl, and Donald, Alva Fulton, and several nieces and nephews, whereas the mayor, members of this council, and all his friends, neighbors, and acquaintances will miss this kind and gentleman who both personally and professionally touched so many lives. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and the members of the council share this great sense of loss with the family and friends of the late Wade Johnson, and do with deepest regret take official notice of the loss of Wade Johnson, and be it further resolved that this resolution of respect be spread upon official records of the common council meeting of October 20, 1992, and a copy of it will be transmitted to the immediate family of the late Wade F. Johnson.
I'll move that.
I'll second it.
All in favor indicate by aye.
Aye.
Posed by no. Carried. I'd like to say myself personally that Wade was a friend of mine practically my whole lifetime. He was one of the kindest, gentlest, gentlemanly persons I've ever known, and yet a very fierce competitor. I had the pleasure and privilege playing softball with Wade for years. He pitched and I caught, and as I say, you never found a better competitor than Wade. I never heard a harsh word from Wade or criticism of anybody regardless of how the game went, and nobody wanted to win. And he, more than he did, or hated to lose as much as he did, but he never lost his cool. Everyone, including myself, have lost a great person. I'm sorry. I didn't know he died until today. I was unable to attend his wake and his funeral, and I deeply regret that. Item two, please.
I would like to ask, and I agree with all the words you said about Wade, but let's consider that park up there where you and I played and Johnson played, let's give it a name like Wade Johnson, at least some consideration to the appropriate body that would make that selective, so that we have some further memory of Wade.
Cherry, I thank you, and I would hardly endorse that. There is a committee, I believe, that sort of looks after that park. I don't know how they feel about it, but I'd be very glad to approach him on that change, and I think that would be a very appropriate change. Thanks, Cherry. Item two.
Whereas the meeting this council held on September 15th, a public hearing was held relative to proposed Local Law III of 1992, which would amend Chapter 78 of Fulton City Code, whereas after the hearing was closed, it was resolved that this matter be tabled until this meeting of October 6th, October 20th, 1992, and whereas this matter was again tabled at this meeting, at a later meeting. Now therefore be it resolved, after all public hearings have been held, that Local Law Number III of 1992, which would amend Chapter 78 of Fulton City Code, is hereby approved.
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
All in favor indicate by aye.
Aye.
Posed by no. Carried. Three, please.
Whereas the meeting the council held on October 6th, a clerk was authorized and directed to advertise for public hearing to be held at this meeting of October 20th, relative to his own change request submitted by Kurt W. Brown, Sr., for changes zone from R1 residential to R2 residential for his property located at 1202 East Broadway, in order to qualify for a home occupation permit. Whereas per the minutes of the meeting held on September 14th, 1992, the Fulton Planning Commission, they have recommended to decline this to the common council. Whereas Mr. Brown is being given the opportunity to have a public hearing regarding this request, the hearing is now declared open.
Anyone want to be heard on that? No requests being made to be heard. A hearing is closed.
I have a question on it, Your Honor.
Yes.
He applied for a home occupation. Does anybody know what the home occupation was that he wanted? And 1202 is approximately aware, State.
What was the...
Yeah, motion.
What was the reason that was denied by the zoning group? They cited a reason? Sparked zoning?
Yeah, it was unanimously declined by the Planning Commission. They recommended that the common council decline it.
What was the reason? Why? What was the reason given? Anyone else? Okay. Second time, hearing's closed.
Be it further resolved that the zone change request submitted by Kurt Brown, Sr., for his property located at 1202 East Broadway is hereby declined.
I'll move it.
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
All in favor indicate by aye.
Aye.
Posed by no. Carried. Four, please.
Whereas the meeting the council held on October 6th, a clerk was authorized and directed to advertise for public hearing at this meeting of October 20th, relative to a special use permit requested submitted by Mark and Michelle Sherman for a multiple dwelling unit for their property located at 753 South First Street. Whereas the Fulton Planning Commission has recommended declining the special use permit, whereas Mark and Michelle Sherman are being given the opportunity to have a public hearing regarding this request, the hearing is now declared open.
Anyone from the council have any comment on that?
I've gone up and down that street. I didn't get a chance to talk with everybody, but those I did get a chance to talk to do not want to have this done. They want to leave this area of the city in R2. They don't want to have a three-family within an R2 area.
A what family?
A three-family.
Oh, three-family residents?
Right.
Okay. Anyone else? Any comment from the audience? Hearing is closed. Resolution.
Now therefore be resolved that special use permit request submitted by Mark and Michelle Sherman for their property located at 753 South First Street is hereby declined.
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
All in favor indicate by aye.
Aye.
Posed by no. Carried. Five, please.
Whereas the meeting the council held on October 6th, the clerk was authorized and directed to advertise for public hearing at this meeting of October 20th, relative to a zone change request submitted by Mike Gravoski for a change from zone of R2 residential to C2 commercial for his properties, which consist of four lots directly north of Canal Point for the purpose of relocating an existing electrical repair shop. Whereas Fulton Planning Commission for their meeting of September 14th has recommended declining this zone change request, and Mr. Gravoski is being given an opportunity for a public hearing regarding this request, the hearing is now declared open.
Was that zoning from what to what?
R2 to C2.
And that's next to Canal Point?
Mm-hmm.
What's across the street from that, Your Honor?
Palmer's.
The... Palmer's.
Zoning wise.
Commercial. Palmer's Garage is across the street.
And also his own electrical shop.
Yeah, that's right.
And Canal Point is what, in the C2?
The C2.
C2. If anything is commercial, that certainly is.
The area he's talking about is residential, though.
That's not commercial.
I know that's not commercial, John, but certainly Palmer's is, and the electrical shop, and Canal Point, and everything else around there. Yeah. Sure. I mean, that place that he's asking to rezone is fast becoming a dump. Sure.
This property he's talking about has two homes on each side of it. One home is the home I purchased in July, my husband and I, which we are now redoing. We have got to the inside. We've completely started remodeling that home. We would have never purchased that home if we knew he was going to turn that property into being a commercial lot.
Oh, the one right on the end?
No.
The one in between?
It's 798. It's our home. It's 798 South First Street. It's the property right next to it. The other side of that property is another home.
It's not the one I thought it was, then?
Again, I polled the people who live in that area, and they're definitely opposed to this. They don't want to see commercial or manufacturing creeping into their residential area.
Okay, anybody else? Hearing is closed. Resolution.
Now therefore be resolved the zone change request submitted by Mr. Gravoski for his properties, which consist of four lots directly north of Canal Point, is hereby declined.
I'll move it. I'll second it.
All in favor indicate by aye.
Aye.
Posed by no. Carried. Six, please.
Result, the mayor is hereby authorized and directed, Niagara Mohawk, as to pole removal and repairs caused by removal and/or installation of poles.
I'll move it. I'll second it.
All in favor indicate by aye.
Aye.
Posed by no. Carried. Seven, please.
Result, the city chairman is hereby authorized and directed to transfer $1,102 from the contingent account to the A3510.47 Control of Animals account.
Motion.
What is that for? Wait a minute. To move it to...
Animal account.
Which is what? But I wasn't here when you discussed it.
Pay the bill we passed last week?
It's for the bill for the cats and stuff that were picked up from sea.
Okay.
That's bill.
Okay. Does everybody know how much this cost so far? Just so people know what we're spending money on?
Well, they were notified the last meeting, Ross.
Were they?
Yes.
Okay. $1,336.
If somebody wishes to speak, you'll be recognized, and you can come up in front, give your name, and speak, okay? Let's not, please, have extemporaneous remarks from the audience, because if that does happen during this meeting, I'll ask you not to do that, and if you continue to do it, then I'll ask you to leave. We have any problem with that? Okay. Motion, please.
I think I would only like to make this comment that it does show that there was a need to adopt an ordinance.
No question about it. Motion, please.
I'll move it. Second.
All in favor indicate by aye.
Aye.
Posed by no. Carried. Eight, please.
Result, that the regular meeting in the common council scheduled for Tuesday, November 3rd, 1992, be changed to Thursday, November 5th, 1992.
I'll move it. Second.
All in favor indicate by aye.
Aye.
Posed by no. Carried. Nine, please.
Result, the mayor is hereby authorized to sign a one-year maintenance agreement between Alltown, New York and the city of Fulton, commencing off October 1st, 1992, and to expire October 1st, 1993.
Does it cost?
$1,463. It is a budgeted item.
Is that up over last year?
No.
Motion, please.
I'll move it. Second.
All in favor indicate by aye.
Aye.
Posed by no. Carried. Ten, please.
Result, the mayor is hereby authorized to sign a one-year maintenance agreement between Simplex Time Recorder and the city of Fulton, commencing January 1 for the fire alarm and clock system at the municipal building at a cost of $471.75. Said cost is a direct charge of the A1620.45 building account. It is a budgeted item.
Motion.
I'll move it. Second.
All in favor indicate by aye.
Aye.
Posed by no. Carried. Eleven, please.
Result, the following bill is hereby approved for payment, National Casualty Company, $2,500 for deductible reimbursement for the city of Fulton versus Ronald Kimball claim.
This was a bill, incidentally, it was cut in half actually by the insurance company who handles the claims against a city of this kind. This was a case that went to trial on a claim by a convicted felon that he was physically injured by the police department during the time of his arrest, and the case was thrown out by the jury. We have a $5,000 deductible, which means that in any case of this kind, we pay the first $5,000. Insurance company in this case cut that in half, so we are actually made a gift of $2,500. Motion, please.
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor indicate by aye.
Aye.
Posed by no. Carried. Twelve, please.
Result, the city clerk is hereby authorized and directed to advertise for polling places of the city of Fulton for 1992 general election as follows. Ward's 1 and 2, Ward's 1, District 1 and 2, Holy Family School; Ward 2, District 1 and 2, Or Memorial Building; Ward 3, District 1, Lanigan School; District 2, Our Savior Lutheran Church; Ward 4, District 1 and 2, Masonic Temple; Ward 5, District 1, Topath Towers; District 2, Fairgrave School; and Ward 6, District 1 and 2, First Assembly of God Church.
I'll move. Second.
All in favor indicate by aye.
Aye.
Posed by no. Carried. Thirteen, please.
Notation that the appointment of John Lincoln, Chairman James Rice, and James Myers to the Common Council Public Works Committee is hereby entered into the minutes of this common council meeting of October 20 as a matter of record.
Fourteen, please.
Result, that the zone change request submitted by Nestle's Chocolate and Confection Company from R2 residential to M1 manufacturing for their property located within the fourth ward, in order to use this property for additional parking, is hereby referred to the Planning Commission for their review and recommendation to be returned back to the council at a future meeting.
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
All in favor indicate by aye.
Aye.
Posed by no. Carried. Fifteen, please.
Whereas on November 3rd, the voters of New York State will consider a proposition entitled to jobs for the New York Bond Act. Whereas such Bond Act, if passed, will provide $800 million for investment in water, sewer, transportation, and other infrastructure improvements on publicly owned land that lead to the creation of retention of permanent private sector jobs. Whereas funding of such infrastructure projects in the city of Fulton and County of Oswego will enhance the economic well-being of our residents and our community. Whereas the cost of issuing such state debt will be more than offset by the job creation and state and local tax revenue generation that result from passage and implementation of the Bond Act. Now therefore be it resolved that the common council of the city of Fulton does hereby express its support for public passage of the jobs for New York Bond Act on November 3rd, 1992, urging all Fulton residents to vote yes.
This Jobs Bond Act has a direct effect on this city. We are in the process of planning a new storm sewer from Nestle plant. They must have. They already have a very serious flooding problem there, but in order to build the addition that they are planning to build, if awarded, and right now it looks like they have a very excellent chance of being awarded that addition, they must have a new sewer built. The cost of the sewer is a lot of money. The Jobs Bond Act, we have made an application for, I think it was $400,000 to $500,000, to assist in this, and this is exactly what this act was designed to do because with this, or makes the addition, the plant possible, which will then provide more jobs. That's exactly what the Jobs Bond Act is intended to do. If we don't get this money under the Job Bond Act, if it's not passed, then the city will have to come up with that money, and if we don't, and the sewer isn't built, they don't get the addition, Nestle is history. This comes directly from the manager of Nestle. So... That's exactly what I'm saying, and that's exactly what that manager said of Nestle's.
...
The state ditch, unfortunately, that doesn't take care of Nestle's problem.
It doesn't take care of its problem, but it is the reason for the problem. What I'm saying is why is this common council going to spend the money for one business, for one sewer line, when you can take that money and upgrade the system that it runs into, which is the state ditch, and take care of the whole southeast quadrant of the city?
Well, take care of the problem, the state ditch is not going to take care of Nestle's problem.
Well, is it...
How's it gonna... This is called for a six-foot storm drain, okay? Now, how is, let's say, upgrading or whatever has to be done to the state ditch is done, how does that solve their problem? How does that install a six-foot storm drain from Nestle to the state ditch?
The problem with Nestle's right now is that a 36-inch pipe that runs pipe right down my property right now backs up because of one. A grading that is in the underground system is placed at my property and not at the opening, so that it acts as a dam in a storm situation, which causes the water not to flow out of Nestle's into the state ditch, which has not been...
That's only part of the problem.
It's part of the problem, but also...
The other part, the other part is that it has, they have to have a larger storm drain from Nestle to the state ditch.
Mr. Myers will tell you, Nestle also has an existing right-of-way in easement through Nestle Avenue, down through a storm thing that they already have in existence. Why can't that be updated and rebuilt to facilitate what Nestle wants to accomplish?
I've been, on top of this, right from the beginning. I've read the engineers' reports, studies, diagrams, surveys, everything else. These are two firms of engineers who have done this, and this is the only solution they could come up with. They were aware of that problem, or rather, the existence of the drain on Nestle. They were aware of all the drains. They're familiar with the whole layout. They're also familiar with the problem with the state ditch, and this is what they have come up with.
We can't, we can't lose sight of the fact that these grants, number one, are very competitive, and to be eligible to get them, we have to show that we're retaining jobs within our application, which is why...
This grant is the background gunfire to the application. You're looking at one avenue to solve one problem, where there are more than one avenues that have been taken to solve the same problem and enhance everyone that lives in that community in that area.
And Mr. Myers, you said you've been on top of it. Can you tell us now where the new existing pipeline is going to go? Ask our...
Yeah. Right now, the project is to go down to First Street, to the First Street Sewer, then down the First Street Sewer to the Nestle pump station that's directly opposite Nestle Avenue.
No new pump station behind Masonic and no run through...
See, this is where we're concerned. They surveyed all our property, and they're telling us they're going to put in a pump station up there.
They're going to go down through the Masonic Temple, where they presently have an easement, to First Street, down First Street, to Nestle, and then up to the present pumping station and put in a new pump station.
Where the pump station is going to be located.
Where the present one is on Nestle Avenue.
Is that definite?
So in other words, it's not going to affect the property where they surveyed and gone up all through First Street for the past two months?
No. No. That's what they originally were thinking about.
That's what we were originally told. Our property's been surveyed, and it's going to affect three residential properties, and that's what we were told.
Excuse me, Neil Bibby, who is our engineer's out there in the audience, maybe he can answer some questions.
I know he is, but I've been over this with the engineers for Nestle, the engineers for, um, there are two engineering firms, and I've been in on it right from the beginning. Neil has only been here recently and hasn't had the exposure to it that I've had.
Would you do it affect anybody's residential homes or property?
I don't see why it should.
Okay, then why our property? I mean, I'm not being...
That was the original plan.
To go through our property?
Yes.
Okay, what changed their mind?
Well, first place, they don't have easements, okay? And the second place, you had to have a plan in making this application that took care, that had easements or rights of way that were in place in order to make the application. So the obvious way to go would be down First Street to Nestle, and then out through the existing pumping station. I mean, that made sense to me anyway, to begin with. I mean, why bother, why bother to make a new pathway through somebody's yard when you already have an existing route to go?
And from what we were told in the description from one of the surveyors, the pipe was going to go up over the existing riverbank and be exposed. Now that, you know, that's not feasible.
No, I agree.
So that will not happen? It won't happen, then, from what you're saying?
No, because that's the plan that is submitted. I saw the plan.
When we go into vote, this is the plan that we're voting on, okay?
Yes.
That's what I want to know.
Jobs Bond Act.
But I mean, also, not only on that, the Bond Act, but our knowledge of what that bond is going to be used for. I mean...
It's not going to take our property?
Is this used, right, or no?
I'm sorry, don't play my mistake.
It's a statewide, it's a statewide proposition.
Oh, yeah, the whole state, not just ours.
But it's to upgrade...
I don't think this is going to cost $800 million. I know, I couldn't tell you what they have in mind for the rest of the state. Find one of the...
Okay, we vote on it. You're presenting to this community how you're going to use that money that you're awarded, okay? What we're saying is, before we go into vote on that act, we want to know exactly what your intention is with that money.
What, you know what it really boils down to, the bottom line?
What's that?
It's ensuring that Nestle stays here.
I'm all for Nestle staying there, but I'm also... They're going to be upgrading their plant. I understand that, but I have also had... Make it more competitive. You can't deny the fact that problems from Nestle's with the state ditch and everything prior that has happened in the past here hasn't always been resolved, and the direction has changed from time to time on how your approach to the problem is going to be resolved. And all I'm asking for is, we want some kind of plan so we know what direction the city's going in, so that we're not guessing continually what's going to happen in that area.
If I could give you a plan like that, I'd be the happiest man in the world.
I wish you could.
Yeah, so do I.
But at least, I mean, what we're saying is, three weeks ago, we were under the assumption that you were going to go through our yards, pump station's going over there, and I talked to the...
Three or four weeks ago, that was the plan.
What I'm saying is, is why do we wait two weeks prior to voting on this Bond Act to have these kinds of decisions made and not...
It's very simple, because they sprung this on us approximately five to six weeks ago, saying, "You got to get this application in." We had to get engineers and everybody working on this and working. In fact, that's practically all that our city engineer has done since... all that our city engineer has done since he came to Fulton, is work on that application, and that's when we finally got it, just got this thing in. And they gave us a deadline, I think it was about a week ago, to have these applications in. Even though the Jobs Bond Act hasn't even been voted on, we were given a deadline, and it was very clear that if we didn't meet that deadline, didn't matter how urgent our need was, we were not going to get the money. Okay? So this was the first opportunity we've had to bring this into a council meeting.
I'm just saying, if it could have been presented in a fuller data, it would have been easier.
I'd have been very happy to.
So we just want to ensure that it's not gonna affect the residential area down there, right?
No.
I mean, it's gonna be an, an existing pump station that's in there now?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Motion?
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by no. Carry. Sixteen, please.
Resolve the following bill be approved for payment, New York State D E C, seventy-five-hundred dollars for the nineteen ninety-two state speedy's permit.
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by no. Carry. Seventeen, please.
Resolve that the mayor is hereby authorized to sign an agreement with Siachi, Ditcher, Hagan, Little, and Mickelson, certified public accountants and consultants for the nineteen ninety-two single audit, at a cost not to exceed eleven thousand dollars, to be a direct charge to the city chamberlain's account.
As I understand, this is something required by law.
Yes.
And it's a budgeted item.
Yes.
Okay. Motion, please.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by no. Carry. Eighteen, please.
Resolve that chapter one sixty-five dash fifty-two, schedule eight of the vehicle and traffic ordinance of the city of Fulton, title stop intersections be amended to read as follows. Install stop signs on East Broadway at the intersection of South Twelfth Street for both eastbound and westbound traffic.
Motion.
I'll move it.
Second. All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by no. Carry. Under discussion, first item, loitering. We have a proposed ordinance that the city attorney is working on at the present time to ban loitering unless for a legal reason or a good, a good reason. The purpose of the loitering, which is an ordinance, incidentally, that many cities do have, and we are looking at their ordinances as, uh, for ideas and suggestions. There've been quite a few complaints about loitering, especially in the downtown area, people who are being insulted, harassed, and otherwise making them feel very uncomfortable, which is something historically the city's never had to cope with, and was part of the reason why I issued an order, uh, closing off the downtown Canal View parking lot after nine o'clock, so that we will be presenting this in the near future for a public review and possible vote. Anyone have any comments at this time about it? Okay? Item two, proposed amendments to the, uh, what we are calling the garbage ordinance. Uh, who was it?
Jim.
Uh, Jim, you wanna talk about that, please?
Yeah, one of the best working ordinances we have in the city is the weed ordinance, which, uh, to put it simply, if somebody is in violation of it, we send them a letter saying they have five days to cut the grass, or we come in and cut it, and then charge them the, for the, I guess, two men and whatever amount of time to do it and put it on their taxes. Uh, we have a problem with the garbage ordinance when people put garbage out on the wrong day, uh, they move on an apart, of, of an apartment and leave everything out to the road if it's on the wrong day. By the time we, uh, give them an appearance ticket, or the property owner an appearance ticket, and they go to court, the garbage day is gone by and it's gonna be eventually picked up anyway. I had asked Spencer last week why we couldn't treat that the same way we treat the, uh, the weed ordinance, which should be, if somebody is in violation, to have the commissioner or his designee go to the property owner or the tenant or whoever and tell them, give them a letter, whatever, however we decide to handle it, that they have till the end of the day to take the garbage back. When he comes, he can come by the next morning, if it's still out, have the city pick it up, figure out how much it costs to do that, and then assess it on his taxes at the end of the year.
Pardon?
In other words, it's gonna be another fee against landlords who have no control of the, the tenants putting garbage out the day early.
Well, you're responsible for your tenants.
Why has to take them to the bathroom, too?
Somebody's gotta be responsible, Ron. I, we know, we know of cases in, wait a minute. Yeah, well, that doesn't produce many results. We know of cases where there's been accumulations of trash and garbage in people's backyards, porches, almost monumental proportions, and they simply have ignored it. Nothing has been done by the court, and I think it's time that we had to do something about it. I'm sure that landlords like you are not a problem, but unfortunately, not all landlords are like you.
It's just, it's starting to become monumental. It's the same thing you did with the water bills. A prime example, I have to convict a tenant for that name of water bills. I was told that she was back, four hundred fifty-two dollars. I lost the money because I, the landlord has to pay it. In the meantime, the next day, the city gets her water, and somebody else is paying another landlord. Now, is that fair to the new landlord or the old landlord? So the person has to become responsible some type of way.
Well, unfortunately, there isn't much we can do about the tenants, it seems. You know, there's risks in all businesses.
Now, you have the opportunity to take them to court and sue them in small claims court to get, then your problem should be solved.
The city, maybe if this person will do it again, and then the landlord will probably have to be convicted for the same thing, the city will do it again. And this person will keep going right around and, and not ban their, not ban their water bills. Actually, the city's gonna get stopped.
Ron, do you require references when you, do you follow up and call the previous tenant and ask him if this person is carrying a water bill out?
It is hard.
I know, I know it's hard.
Your problem to the reason why many years ago I decided not to be in the apartment business anymore, and I, I can afford a lawyer.
Why, excuse me, why can't you just have a citation against that tenant?
Yeah, we, we've tried that. So far, we haven't succeeded in a sing, single...
That's what the law is for. I mean, why, why burden someone else? I mean, if somebody else commits a crime, why, why, why should you burden someone else with the responsibility of bringing that person to justice?
Well, let me see, with all the citations that we have issued for various violations of municipal ordinances, I think one has finally come to trial.
Why?
Don't ask me why, I don't run the court.
What usually happens, too, is you got one tenant blaming another tenant for the trash. I mean...
Well, you gotta just open the trash and find out who's, who's the trashy guy.
But it's easier said than done.
I don't think I have a solution to the trash problem, but a curious thing was just said about the water department reopening an account in a person's name who had previously been delinquent. I know that power companies, for example, and telecom companies, when they have that situation arise, require the posting of some form of surety for the payment of the bill. It would seem that perhaps that area of operation ought to be examined to see if we could slow down some of the practice of avoiding water bills. The delay in their collection, uh, must cost the city something, and posting of surety would perhaps alleviate some of that. I realize that's not on point on the trash issue, that's before the council, but it was brought up in the...
That's a good idea. Thank you. Anyone else?
To protect the landlord, um, I believe most of them get a security deposit anyway. I think it should be up to the city to let them know that, um, we have done this and that at the end of the year, they would have it tacked onto their tax bill, so before they give a security ba, deposit back to the tenant that, that, uh, that did it, they can deduct the amount that they're gonna be assessed on their taxes.
A lot of times, Jim, though, the security deposit covers damages, you know, physical damages to the insides of, of apartments, too, so, I mean, you're looking at a lot more money.
Well, if they do more damage in the security deposit, you're right, but... Right.
I brought that up in the back room, as a matter of fact.
That's what they're gonna try and take care of. If you can't go through the property suit, just go through the court. You should find out why it's not going through the court, instead of trying to do it a different way. You've already passed a law, how are you gonna solve this problem? Now you're trying to change it to a different street.
Now, we passed a law, and it didn't solve the problem.
I know why it's not working, because it shouldn't have worked.
Oh, why don't you check that out, Ron? You know how to do it.
I don't, actually, I don't know. This is why I'm asking.
Well, go to the obvious source.
You're talking about fraud.
Pardon me?
How, how would I find out who's responsible for the law not working?
Who's supposed to talk to? The city, the city attorney.
City attorney, he's doing his job. Whenever he's notified there's a trial, he's right there.
Trial, why does there have to be a trial for, isn't it like a beautiful, uh, judge violation?
No. You serve somebody with a summons or appearance ticket or an accusatory instrument citing a violation of an ordinance, and it goes before the court, and the court has, the person pleads not guilty, you have to schedule a trial. We can't, we can't do that. City attorney doesn't come into the picture until there's a trial.
Mr. Mayor, how many have you done?
We've run about sixty something there.
Sixty?
Yeah.
And how long have you been there?
About a year.
And how long have you been there?
I don't know. Once I go, please may go the attorney, between attorney and the judge.
Does the attorney, would we know that, is he there, is he taking you to the judge yet?
They are all presented to the court. The next move is up to the court. The attorney has nothing to do with scheduling trials.
Okay, Mayor? This might be a good time for Steve Lund to answer. I've had over a hundred violations that have not been taken care of in court yet. I had five accusatories that have been lost.
Lost where?
You, you tell me. Nobody knows. Steve, why don't you tell them what's going on?
Well, I'm not that familiar with it myself. I haven't been doing this job for a long time, but there seems to be a weakness between my department and the, uh, when it gets to the courts. But it's something that we are trying to find out exactly what the problem is, and we're trying to get the system to work. I just, it's a whole new process that hasn't been initiated before in this town.
What do you mean, there's a weakness? Do you have some good writing there?
Well, yeah, I've just discovered, I, I don't think that they've done a lot of building and zoning, uh, in this, in this town.
Yes.
Is there a speedy, speedy trial provision, is there a, for a year?
Uh...
You want to come through with an attorney and make your motion, this matter pending? Will you make a motion for a speedy trial? I mean, this is in the statute, is this, is it a quasi-criminal, or is this...
Sal, from an attorney with as much experience as you've had in court, I'm amazed that you would come up with that question.
I know that if, uh, I was defending somebody on, uh, something like that and asked them to present it, they haven't even been arraigned. I've been in the courts, not even one case...
Sal, I know that, and you know that, but I don't think the rest of the people quite understand the process.
What you're saying is the problem is the judge that's...
Right.
Jesus.
Let's get some, Ron, let's, let's let someone, sometimes your lack of tact exceeds your brilliance. Let's give somebody else a chance, Ron, I'll get back to you.
Mr. Mayor, my name is Donald Walsh, and I've had a problem for three years. I've been to every personnel in the city of Fulton, and I think they can tell you about this. They've had these things go before the court. And I'll answer your question, Ron. They never do anything with it. It stops, and they've been handed in time after time, and I'd still like to know the answer for it. And I'm talking about garbage. You're talking about one little thing about you can't collect from a, uh, somebody in your building, and I think it's your responsibility to, to, uh, take care of that stuff if you're gonna rent it. And when I've had the, all the personnel in Fulton, and it always stops at one person, and you can't blame Spencer because Spencer's done his job.
So is Steve.
Steve Lund has done his job. The mayor's done his, and the stillness, uh, city of Fulton is nothing but like a joke yard. Just go around, take a look at it.
We gotta start getting these welfare people out of our town.
Sal...
Never made a welfare people.
We're not going anywhere.
Sal...
There's a lot of good, good welfare people.
I realize what you're saying.
I do, George. I live here.
So don't I. I've lived here all my life.
Excuse me, I have.
Hey, wait a minute. Hey, you're not a lawyer?
I want you to sit down.
I'm not done yet. You may be a lawyer, but I'm a lawyer, too, right now.
Pipe it down, okay?
Yeah, pipe it down. You pipe it down.
John, please. We don't need it.
Well, I'd just like to stress my point. If they wanna know where the law begins and where it stops, find out for themselves.
Okay, I, I think we belabored that subject long enough. Okay, the next item on discussion is a lease agreement under the senior nutrition program. I, I think we've discussed that beyond...
It's just a thing on the garbage ordinance, okay? We're the pilot program for recycling and the whole, the whole nine yards on this, all right?
Yeah.
So why don't you be the pilot program on something to do with this problem? I mean, we can't, we can't jump in and show the state that, hey, we're gonna be the pilot program, and then once we run into a problem situation with it, we don't know what to do with it. If you accepted the fact that you're gonna be the pilot program, then you accept the fact that you're gonna have to come up with answers for these questions. I mean, you can't leave these...
I, I don't think I understand what you're referring to as a pilot, pilot program.
For reclamation and garbage pickup, Fulton was...
That isn't what this is, we're, we're talking about.
It is. It has everything to do with your garbage.
What we're talking about is assessing the cost of removal of trash and garbage when the owner or tenant refuses to do that and adding it on to taxes. It is not reclamation. That's a whole new...
This whole thing, you might, we'd have to hang for that, for the...
Well, that's a, that's a whole new other subject.
But that is why it started, okay? Didn't get it, or did it?
Wait a minute, wait a minute. I, I, you know, I love to open things up to discussion, but that is definitely not a part of this particular item on discussion, all right? Not reclamation.
It's a part of it, okay? I understand what you're saying, reclamation, but the garbage aspect of it also, at the meeting when the pilot program was discussed, and these home landlords were complaining about garbage pickup, it was discussed at that meeting, all right?
Why didn't we, why didn't we go into it then, instead of...
You weren't in the office at the time.
Are we gonna go back next last year and bring up all these things that...
Excuse me, but as a taxpayer to the city, why, when we ask you a question and we want an answer, why do you tell the taxpayer that we'll find the answer? I don't understand that. You're supposed to be a public servant here, okay? It's your program, it's your garbage to pick up, okay? It's their problem, they're asking for your help. You don't, you just don't tell them, we'll find the answer themselves, you give them help.
Did you, did you hear what the proposed, proposal is?
No, I haven't...
Do you understand what the proposal was? And you don't think that that addresses the problem?
No, I think you're throwing it right back in their laps, and I, because you, you don't use the system as such to solve the problem now.
You don't think that if somebody doesn't remove their trash, are given notice to remove the trash, and then the city, after giving them, say, five days' notice, goes in and removes it, charges that person for the cost of removal, adding it to his tax, uh, taxes, does not solve the problem? does not solve the problem?
I think it does for, for a resident, okay? But for, you're not being fair to these landlords, because, like they said, they can't hold, they can't hold these people's hands, I don't think.
You think the landlords are being fair by letting that, uh, happen? By not doing something about it?
Do you think it's their responsibility to dictate the way a person lives? I don't. I think that's up to your...
What would you suggest we do?
I think you should have a, a specific law for, for that problem.
That's what I thought this was.
Yeah, but, but you're, it's gotta be the violator, okay? So actually commits it. The landlord, landlord isn't doing it.
We're gonna add it to the taxes of the tenant?
Saying, I think, in this area, okay, I, I'm not a landlord at the time, but I may be in the future, okay? I live in this community, I think it's pretty vague.
Well, let me ask you, let me ask you this, you know, you live in a nice section of town, your property is well maintained, and I'm sure you'd love to have the same of your neighbors, right? You wanna live in a neighborhood like that. I suggest you take a, a tour of the city, into some areas where there are people who don't do that, that don't take care of their property, that permit the accumulation of trash and debris, and see how you like it. And then ask yourself whether you think this law is a fair law or not.
I think it's fair for the resident, but what I'm saying again, I think it's vague in the area when it comes to landlords, and I think you need to be a little more precise in how you're gonna correct tenants that, that leave this garbage. As far as residential homeowners, fine, I agree with you.
You know what I... George, you know, I, I might be a lawyer, I might be a mayor, I used to be a judge, but I'm not a magician. That's practically what it is, because, you know, it's very difficult to come up with a law that will pinpoint, uh, the guilty party sometimes in situations like this, and be able to enforce it, and that's a problem we're facing. Uh, you, I, do you know some of these tenants that I'm talking about? The type of people who really don't give a, frankly, a damn? And they don't care how much the trash piles up, they don't care how unsightly the premises are, and they don't care what the landlord says to them? I met a lot of them in eight years on the bench, believe me. And some of the stories that I heard from landlords were awful hard to believe. And as I say, seriously, that's why many years ago I gave up trying to be a landlord, because it is so difficult to get tenants who are responsible people. And unfortunately, because they're not responsible, any law that we have tried to enforce these problems hasn't worked with the tenants. And unfortunately, again, the only part, person that we can find that we can enforce against is the landlord. It's that simple.
I think another big problem is the absentee landlords, you know, who, they really don't care who they rent to. I think that, I think that's a major problem, this whole thing.
I agree with you, but we have this too, I think, George, what you're saying about with the water situation is, that you get these people, they stay here, they make it so costly for the landlord, okay? He can't afford to do it anymore. So at some point, he moves to another property, and it's the same thing in another area of town. So what you have is the same situation going to different areas in the town. I mean, you have to get, I agree, if you wanna get the landlord to a degree, fine, but you also have to have some citation against the effect.
Love to if we could, yes.
The problem in the courts, I mean, we've tiptoed around the issue here quite often. We haven't come right out and said it, and as a former judge, maybe you could, uh, enlighten us on that. If these, uh, AIs go before them, what happens to them once they get to the hands of the court?
I think you've already heard that. I think Mr. Walsh has also, already made that very plain.
But instead of blaming the, you know, instead of saying to the court, do your job, you're gonna put it on to the landlord to do the court's job? I mean, is this the policy gonna go into effect?
I, I, I'd just like to address a little of this issue, because I know that this council, I think the city should be very happy with, because for the first time in many, many years, um, these laws are being enforced by the various aldermen, whereas in the past years, um, these laws were never enforced. This council is, and the mayor has, has taken a proactive stance and have directed us to, uh, proceed and prosecute these violators. The part of the problem has been that the, the wheels need to be a little greased, because it hasn't been done in so long. One step is to enact the law which...
Oh, wait a minute, you mean the, uh...
The new law? Which is, I understand was just passed tonight. That gives us a vehicle in which to proceed. Now that Steve will have the ability to issue appearance tickets, that gets it right into the court, that allows me to get in the box and prosecute these violators. That was part of the problem, is just getting the process in order, and, um, the city should be, the citizens should be very, uh, pleased. This council and the administration and, as well as Steve Lunn and, and the, the rest of his crew have worked very hard in taking a proactive stance, and there's a few glitches. And, uh, I've been in contact with Ron Owen, and we're working on a way to get everything done a lot faster, and we're consciously continually updating the system, and, uh, we hope to really iron it out. And I think this law that was just passed really, uh, gives us a, a quick vehicle, and no law's perfect, but we're really, uh, giving it a good shot, and, and for a charter that was, uh, formed some ninety-four years ago, um, the city's really taking a proactive stance, and I think it's a good thing.
And we are not criticizing the mayor of the common council. I think that we found out that the problem was in the court system. And these, these citations, AIs, just get into the court and are never heard from again.
I'm not gonna place any blame, and, and I don't think anybody here wants to place any blame, we're just trying to get everyone to cooperate and, and to do it.
And the other citations put forth, or it's sixty by the DPW, and not one of them has been paid or, or even one, I think, uh, the mayor said one's come to court. What happened with the other fifty-nine?
They've been, they've, they've made appearances, those, those violators appeared in court, they made their court appearances. I don't know what the, the court did unless they enter a plea not guilty. That's where your city attorney comes in, when they enter a plea not guilty, then I prosecute the violators.
No, I, I wanna make it clear that city attorney does not schedule these cases for trial. He prosecutes when they are scheduled for trial. Sal?
I'm just wondering, could you talk, maybe your administration yourself, talk with the judge and see what's going on? First of all, maybe, uh, these, maybe there's a problem in, uh, one of the aldermen or yourself, and the city attorney has to speak with the judge, uh, to resolve this issue. And secondly, George, uh, Mr. Lincoln, you brought up, uh, that landlords have to watch who they're renting to, but I've seen these cases come into my office. Landlords nowadays have to be very careful. I represented a, an older Italian couple, George, who, they advertised in the newspaper, and they said, they put something into the effect that they wanted an older couple, senior citizens, for their apartment, and they were sued. They were sued under a federal law because a woman and husband with, with children came. And I guess these people didn't speak very good in English, and they, they said, look, we want older people here, senior citizens, and they sued them under a statute which allows, under the federal statute. And they went to the HUD, a HUD agency, and they, these people had nothing to do with HUD. Had nothing to do with HUD, but there's a federal law, you can't discriminate, and you have to be careful as a landlord, and now they're looking at a ten thousand dollar fine. And I'll tell you something, it's an administrative body, there's no jury, and, uh, these people are just sickened, we're going through, uh, a lot of legal hoops here. So you have to be careful, when people come as a landlord and they wanna rent, if you badgered it, advertise it for three hundred fifty a month, you gotta be real careful, you give it to them, they got the money in hand, they're ready to pay, it's yours. If they got kids, three, four kids, that's your problem as a landlord. So you really, I, I don't know how, as a landlord, maybe someone who's a landlord here can tell me, how do you get around that? Because, you know, you have to be very careful about the discrimination laws, and you can be sued big time.
Yeah, I agree. That's another reason why I'm not a landlord.
Okay, we've pretty much touched on, uh, the violator, okay? I think you haven't said the violator and, and the tenancy. Is the landlord correct? And why not also have the violator be the tenant at the time, and then have a record of some sort to keep track of it? Regardless of who the landlord happens to be, that the same tenant, it has to be moving around and causing these headaches.
We, we, we have active files, and, uh, we, we red flag persistent violators, and we have a policy, no, no deals, plead guilty or else, that's it. We have certain particular repeat offenders that we do not, uh, we do not cut any breaks, no plea bargaining, it's that simple. Naturally, there's some cases that, uh, the person deserves a break, there's certain equities involved in these situations, you never know what happens, and, and repeat offenders are trea- treated accordingly.
Well, that was...
And I've got it around me, and I mean, I don't like it.
I guess you gotta think of it this way. If we don't put the onus onto the landlord, and we have to send our DPW over there to pick up the garbage, we're all paying for it out here. You're the one who's paying for that DPW guy to go and pick that garbage up.
You're, uh...
Well, it's, Ron, it's up to the, the landlord to, to be responsible for his tenants. You know, it's kinda frustrating to sit here and go around the city and people say, jeez, our city looks like hell. And then we come up, somebody comes up with an idea on how, on how to solve the problem, and we sit here and pick it apart. Well, if we don't enforce some tough laws, where we make people responsible and responsible for the people they rent to, our city's not gonna get any better. And we as taxpayers are gonna be the ones who pay for it. It's just gonna get worse.
You know, yes ma'am. Let the lady speak, please, she's had her hand up. Yeah, we, we, sure does, well... Ma'am, that's, we, part of what we've been discussing right along is the problem of enforcing it. Because this ordinance we can enforce. We don't have to put it in court. That's the difference.
I think a lot of people are confusing what I have, my idea, with housing code violations and building codes like that. The problem with taking this type of thing to court is that your garbage gets picked up every week. We have court once a week, and I don't know if all the, the AIs are taken every week or once a month or whatever, but even if it is once a week, by the time they get to court and the judge says either a fine or don't let it happen again, or whatever he's gonna say, the garbage men have come back around for the following week, so it's gone anyway. In the meantime, the people who live in that area have to look at a whole pile of garbage all the rest of the week. And that's what all of us up here have heard for however long we've been on the council. Is it gonna pick up, be picked up sooning?
Because we're gonna pick it up. Jim's right, excuse me just a minute, uh, Tim. Jim's right, and that's a, a very good point. This way, the trash is gonna be removed. The other way with the ordinances in effect now, as he says, it can take weeks, even months, for a case to come up in front of the judge. Now, let's take a case in point, suppose you've got a violator, and what we're concerned with is the one who is a gross violator, that's the one we, uh, care about, and lets it really pile up. So by the time that case comes to court, you've got trash up to the second story window. Then he gets into, then he gets, what do you mean, we don't wait? They do, if it's in the backyard, they have to. And then the point, that isn't exactly the way it works, Ron. Ron, we're aiming at the one who permits a huge accumulation of trash. That's the big problem we have. And we have to have a way, uh, some way of reaching these, you're not one of the problems, okay? And so I don't even know why you're that concerned to begin with. The ones who are the, the real violators are not here. The ones who do obey the law are the ones that are here and the ones that are objecting. The ones we wanna get at are the violators who don't pay any attention to the laws and the rules, and, and just let the trash accumulate. That's what we're trying to do, same as the weed ordinance, I'm sure you've all seen yards where the grass is this high. And, you know, we have the power now, there is an ordinance, been on the books for years, to go and cut that and charge that landowner and put it on his taxes if it isn't paid. And that's all we're trying to do with trash. As a matter of fact, uh, Spencer just tells me that there's been something like close to a hundred cases that have appeared in court, and not a single fine has been levied. We're not sure of the, the amount. I don't know, I'm not the judge. Dave?
It occurs to me that while I recognize the trash problem, that what you are doing by passing this ordinance is making for very convenient trash pickup for tenants. If I'm a tenant, I put my trash out whenever I want, the city comes along and picks it up, bills my landlord. What does that accomplish?
We have a lawyer. But you know as well as I do that he has recourse. Why?
Your tenants' taxes.
If the tenant isn't doing what he is supposed to do on trash disposal, then the landlord does have some recourse.
But your honor, the, the recourse for the landlord has the same recourse the council has, which is to go in court, which your honor is telling everyone, you can't get it done. I mean, I think that, uh, simply saying to the landlord, well, you go through the tenants because we can't get our citations handled, to me is a little troublesome.
You know, one of the things that really amazes me about this job since I became mayor, I remember before that, the many multitude of complaints that people had about the condition of the city, the failure, zone ordinance, the lack, uh, of, or zone violations, the lack of, uh, ordinances to deal with the problems of trash and so on. And now, in a few short months, we have tried to do more than has been done for years in this city. And every time we try to come up with something that will attack the problem, we get all kinds of complaints against it. You know, it really makes you wonder if it's worth trying. Everybody here, I don't think you see a single person in this audience that isn't careful, meticulous, responsible homeowners. And you're the ones that are objecting to an ordinance that's going to penalize the slumlords for one thing, and the ones who just don't pay any attention to the problem of trash removal, which is a serious problem in this city. And I'm not sure exactly what you do want us to do.
You tell the audience how we as citizens could get the court to enforce the laws that you gentlemen kindly passed on our behalf?
Yeah, go and see it.
How about you, as representative of the city, could you see this?
I will.
And say, how come no fines have come from this?
I will.
How come these laws are not being enforced by the court?
Yes, I will. Frank?
Your honor, I, I wanna say, I am a relative newcomer to the community. I think the council, you and the council ought to be commended for a lot of the steps that you're taking here. I think the new landlord ordinance is an excellent ordinance. I think that the sentiments that you're expressing, your honor, are great. Anybody has a problem with sending people out to clean up bad trash areas? My understanding of, of Alton Myers' ordinance was that if, if a tenant puts his trash out two days early by the road, that the city's gonna come and pick it up and charge the landlord for it. I think if, if what you're talking about is slumlords who really do let trash pile up to the second story, I have heard anybody here say anything that would suggest that, that they would oppose that.
Well, one of the things I don't think was made very clear, that before any, uh, trash is picked up, there would be a notice to that land... is picked up, there would be a notice to that landlord of a violation and an opportunity to rectify it. Now, let's assume that you do have a tenant that does something, what you just said, and he ignores it, the notice. Then I think, you know, we do have to take some action. You know, these things aren't gonna happen that often, but it does help us to deal with the serious problem we have with slumlords. I'm not saying there won't be some times when maybe an innocent party is penalized, good lord, and you as a lawyer would know that. The law certainly isn't perfect, never claimed to be and never will be. But we're thinking about the majority and the city as a whole that needs to be cleaned up and needs it badly. Tom, you want to say something?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask you, give me a question. Say you rode up Pratt Street and there's eight bags of garbage out there a day ahead of time. What are you doing? Do you just look at it?
No, I would call Bucky and...
Would you go to that door? You're the alderman. Couldn't you knock on that door and maybe solve it right then and there?
I could, but I don't have the authority that's in the ordinance to cite him or...
You're the alderman, Jimmy.
Or, excuse me?
You're the alderman.
Yeah.
How about you could solve it right then and there?
If I could, that'd be great, but suppose they don't, they say, no, we're not gonna do it.
I'm not saying all of them, but I'll bet you could solve some of it. By the time you call Bucky and Joe and Pete and Harry, it's Wednesday.
I know on several occasions I've done that, Tom.
I know you have. I've seen you do it.
Yeah, I've...
I'm asking, what would you do?
And they've been very willing to get the garbage right out of there.
Suppose?
I'm saying, Jimmy, if you act on something like that, if you see it, you know, it might work.
Hopefully.
And if it doesn't? Then I don't have the authority that Bucky does to serve them or whatever, however we're gonna handle it and say, if you don't do it...
I'm not saying that...
If you don't do it tomorrow, or if you don't get it back by today, we're gonna come by tomorrow. Just a minute. What?
Well, I found that to be the case when I've gone over to talk to the tenants at the various places throughout my ward. My biggest problems with the absentee landlords, where we have continuous problems every other week.
But I'm not talking about the landlord. I'm talking about the rent there.
Right.
Go to the door, knock on the door and say, hey, you know, you got your garbage out. You know, hey, it might work.
Dave? I say, that's fine, but if it doesn't work, what do you do?
Yeah, I think you're right. As a courtesy to the landlords, I've done that several times in my ward where I've gone by, there's been a lot of trash out. I'll call the landlord first before I call Steve and say, are you aware that your tenants have a lot of trash out and no stickers? Could you do something about it? And they're usually very cordial and they'll thank me for calling. In fact, one of them was a house of one of our policemen and he didn't know that they were out there. And he took care of it, you know, right away.
Or sometimes tenants move out and leave all their trash to the road and the landlord
doesn't even know they're gone. So then you have to make them aware of it. So common courtesy works best first and then if you can't get any action, then go, you know, the legal process. Dave?
Your Honor, my apparent failure to adequately articulate my point apparently has led you to believe I was criticizing the efforts of this council in passing an assortment of ordinances designed to improve the city. That is not my intention. What I am trying to convey to the council is that if you pass an ordinance which specifically assesses the cost of picking up the garbage against the landlord, you leave him with no recourse against the tenant. If however you were to include in that ordinance a provision that the charge be assessed against the tenant and upon his failure to pay that assessed against the tax rule, the landlord would have recourse against the tenant to recover that charge should it then be applied to him.
Yeah, I was looking into it today. Thank you. I'd like to say this much too about any of these appearances in court. It may well be that what happened there, the judge determined that he would give them an opportunity to rectify the situation by what we call an ACD, which is the German in contemplation of dismissal. Gives that person usually six months in which to clean up their act. If they don't, then the charge is still pending. At the end of that time, if they have, then it's automatically dismissed. Now, that could be what has been happening in some of these cases or maybe most of them. And that did cure the problem. I used to do that very often myself when I was judge. Yes, as Spencer has pointed out, many cases are resolved before they even get into court after an appearance ticket or an accusatory instrument is served on the person, particularly in the case of an appearance ticket. So, you know, it's very difficult and that's frankly the reason why I was very reluctant to make any accusations where the court is concerned, to know exactly what transpired on these things if you're not there. But I will speak to the judge and see what can be done to help remedy the situation if it needs remedying or assist in any way that I can. Yes.
Can landlords protect themselves by putting in their lease with these tenants at the sign?
Sure. Sure, they absolutely can. Many of them don't bother with leases though. In fact, it would be a relatively simple job and not very expensive to have a form lease that they can have printed and use it every time they have a tenant. I have recommended it with my clients and I have for years. Anyone else? Okay, the next item on discussion is a lease agreement under the senior nutrition program. This is a program where senior citizens are permitted to prepare their meals in the kitchen and the community room and use the community room, half of that, and the kitchen facilities for a year at a time. I have a letter from Margaret Hamilton, who was the director of senior services in Oswego County, asking for another contract for the coming year and cites that they have had a reduction in their program income. And for that reason, can't afford to pay the city any rent for the use of the community room and the kitchen. They use it to prepare meals from 9:30 in the morning to 2:30 in the afternoon. I guess this has been an ongoing thing for a number of years and this helps to provide nourishing meals to senior citizens that can't afford it themselves. Do I have any comment? Do you have a copy of the motion, the resolution?
Result that the mayor has hereby authorized to execute an agreement between the city of Fulton and Oswego County opportunities for a one-year period commencing on January 1, 1993 for use of the community room and municipal building for the senior nutrition program.
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Carry it. Anyone have anything for discussion before we adjourn to executive session? Yes.
I had sent a letter to your honor concerning the... May I approach the microphone?
Sure.
Thank you. I had sent a letter to Mayor Valet and I'm not sure if one was sent also to the alderman concerning the parking situation. As you are aware, in back of my law office sits the Knights of Columbus and I've been informed, not only through Jerry Morbeto's office, but with, I've spoken with Cecil Peters, who was a managing agent for the Topath Towers. It's my understanding they're removing, right now they're removing the asbestos. There's a truck there and they're removing everything inside the building. And with speaking with Mr. Peters, they're gonna have a crane that's gonna come in, they're gonna rope the area off in back of my building. And it's my understanding they're also going to have to rope off the area next to the United Way and the Key Bank parking lot because cars park alongside the Knights of Columbus building. When the crane comes in, obviously, when they're ready to demolish this building, it's gonna be demolished. I'm not sure if they're gonna have to fill it in or whatever it is, but it's gonna be roped off and there's gonna be, not only parking for myself, secretarial staff, and then, let's say, clients, it's gonna be affected. But obviously, the parking for the United Way and all of Key Bank, if you're looking at that parking lot where burned areas, people are gonna have to park somewhere. So what I did was I went to...
Are they going to rope that off too?
If there's a crane there, I can only assume that it's gonna have to be roped off because park, if you picture it, the cars park from the United Way all the way down, from what I've been informed. So they're gonna have to, if they're gonna demolish this structure, if I had a new motor vehicle, I wouldn't wanna park there as the, it's being demolished and there could be rock and debris falling on top of the car. So I assume that they're gonna have to, from what he told me, they are gonna rope it off and then they're going to provide parking for 60 motor vehicles and they're going to, from what I, in speaking with him today, they're going to fence it with, you know, some kind of barriers. It's gonna be a small fence and fence the entire, the entire area so that I believe the access from South First, there will no longer be access from South First Street to South Second Street to the Altel parking lot. All right, so I've sent a, I sent you the letter and I spoke with Mr. Peters, who was very gracious and very helpful. I asked him whether or not we could rent any parking spaces and he said that might be out of the question because they need all the parking spaces they can get. And I was willing to pay for those parking spaces. I also spoke with Chief Stafford and I believe Officer Rebior, the traffic lieutenant, I believe that's who it was, and he, I asked him if there was any place that I could park, you know, any parking permits either on South First Street. I was informed that the closest parking would be either across from Fulton Savings, which is usually filled up, this small parking lot, or at Black Clausen. I could walk from Black Clausen over. You know, that's quite a hike. If I have to do it, I guess I have to do it.
Yeah.
I'm wondering whether or not, if the council could help me here. And it's gonna be, there's gonna be a problem there with the Key Bank parking. You're gonna have those cars, where are they gonna park in the interim? And even when it's fenced off there, I guess, you know, they'll be allowed to park back, you know, for the United Way and Key Bank. I'd like to know if there's any parking spaces available. I did ask across the street from the Knights of Columbus, on South First Street, there is a parking lot. And yesterday, this afternoon, it was relatively empty, but it's my understanding that it has been contracted, at least half of it has been contracted to Topath Towers for their use. So they have half, from what the lieutenant told me, they have half the use of that entire parking lot.
Wouldn't the other half be available?
It's kind of filled up, from what I understand. If it's available, if I can get a, they told me I couldn't use that parking. And I can't use Woolworth's parking because there's a two and a half hour limit. So if someone was to complain, that would be enforced and my car would be towed.
Well, I guess I'm not, I don't understand, is half of the parking lot across from Knights of Columbus available to the public?
But I can't get a permit though. I wasn't, they weren't gonna give me a permit for that.
Well, you, no, you can't get a permit for that. So they couldn't give any private citizen an exclusive right to use a part of a public parking lot. They couldn't do that.
Is it just, how does it work?
I guess the only way you can do it is take your chances.
Is it a first come, first you, you don't need a parking permit there? But that's fine. I mean, that's very accessible. But I just wanted to...
There's no restrictions there as far as I know.
I wanted to, that's not what they told me.
Why?
There are restrictions. You might wanna talk to Chief Stafford because they told me I wouldn't be able, my understanding was I couldn't park there. I'd have to park either at Black Clausen...
Because I thought the only restrictions were on the Canal View parking lot.
I'm not sure. If you could have possibly Alderman Halsted, my building's in his ward, maybe he could take a look at it and let me know. You know, they also indicated that I could park on South First Street across from the municipal building, which is open parking, across from the Elks, it's all open parking. That's, I just wanted the council to be aware that that is going to be within the near future sometime. I understand from Mr. Peters that there is gonna be a crane in the area and they have a demolition crew and it is gonna be demolished.
Let me find out what the restrictions are.
I'd appreciate it, mayor. Thank you.
Sure. Ron, when are the ashes gonna start tearing the building down, do you know?
They're gonna start it out of the inside. They're a salvage company. They're gonna save everything. They'll even save the kind of green flags that turn on from the outside. The respect is with the big...
Are they trying to salvage everything on the inside?
Sure, they'll salvage, they'll salvage everything in that building. Inside, no.
How about the bar? Anything else for discussion?
I have one thing, your honor.
Yeah.
I've gotten some calls regarding what the policy is for pickup of leaves and yard waste.
Oh, yeah.
And I have a, it's my understanding that we can rake leaves to the, into the road and that yard waste, like grass clippings, has to be bagged.
Yeah, Buck?
The largest size of the grass up here, and leaves must be in containers, open containers. But last year, this time, I asked the council, I mean, we had half the council wanting it in containers, the other half wanted to rake the road. And that's what was left last year.
What's your preference?
Well, if they raked them, it didn't put them down the end of the roadway and stuff, but then you still had to rake them off the lawn. But I think the biggest concern last year was that they spent over $60,000 on the catch basin. So they might have called it a catch basin.
So to save money on catch basins...
Well, it's a short season, it's a big handle.
Bagging asbestos?
They did.
What I'd like to do, mayor, is send this to the ordinance committee and have them come up with a recommendation because there's a, there seems to be a lot of confusion.
John, by the time we meet again, the leaves are gonna be gone.
You're right.
Why don't we decide something tonight?
Okay.
And then we can pursue it further later on.
I think, in my opinion, allowing people to rake leaves to the road is the easiest way for Buck to get them with the machine he has. But I think that grass clippings and other yard waste that can be bagged should be bagged.
$60,000 cleaning catch basins is...
Maybe this year we should do it where you could do it either way, but maybe we ought to pass the resolution and then put it out in the newspapers like two months ahead of fall saying that, hey, we're gonna pick them up, but they gotta be in containers. We could pass the resolution like that.
After this year?
No, for, we could pass, couldn't we pass it tonight?
Yeah, you can.
And then, and then just advertise it in the newspapers two months ahead of time before fall arrives.
Yeah, but that would be next year.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
This year, they'd have to bag them?
Right, we can do, we can have it optional, you know, that it's kind of...
This year is optional?
Well, it'd be that it's midway between the season, you know? I mean, people have already started raking them in the roads, other people have bagged them.
Okay.
And you got a catch, just catch can type of thing.
You wanna do a, do a resolution then?
It's already there, though.
It's already there?
Yeah.
So officially, you can do it either way?
Yeah.
Okay.
For this year, but...
I think we should, we should put that out someplace.
I think we should just advertise it, like maybe two or three weeks ahead of time.
Well, then, we can refer that then to the ordinance committee.
Yeah.
So why don't we do that? But this year, you can do it either way. Can swing either way. Any other discussion? Motion to adjourn to executive session?
I'll second it.
All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
Hello, my name's Walter Hafner. I'm a candidate for the position of Oswego County Court Judge, running on the independent line People for Justice Party. In the past six months, I've had the opportunity to speak personally with many of you and tonight I want to state a few words regarding my qualifications for the position of Oswego County Court Judge. I have been a prosecuting attorney with the Oswego County District Attorney's Office for the past four years, trying felony criminal cases in addition to misdemeanor cases in Fulton City Court and the various local town courts. The position of Oswego County Court Judge is one where the judge hears felony criminal matters. I've also had felony criminal court experience as a defense attorney 10 years prior to... I've also had felony criminal court experience as a defense attorney 10 years prior to my association with the Oswego County District Attorney's Office. I worked 10 years prior to my association with the District Attorney's Office, also with Judge Murray, who was a surrogate judge here in Oswego County for 18 years, and prior to that time, district attorney for 12 years. As Judge Murray's confidential law clerk, he many times worked as an county court, acting county court judge, whereby I was responsible for the writing of various decisions and also for the preparation of jury instructions for felony criminal cases. I feel I have the qualifications and the background in that I've had the unique opportunity of not only having prosecution experience, but also experience with representing defendants on the defense side and also with a judge for 10 years. I have been endorsed by the New York State Fraternal Order of Police, the Oswego County Lodge, the Fulton City Police Benevolent Association, and also the Civil Service Employees Association. I would be honored with your consideration November 3rd and your vote November 3rd. I am, as I indicated, the People for Justice Party, 9F on the ballot, where the little farm tractor is. It's the same tractor if many of you saw me during the summer months and the various parades, used as my symbol for the independent party that was established for my candidacy. Thank you again for your consideration and I appreciate very much your vote on November 3rd.